I'd like to call the City of Prospect Heights City Council Meeting of September 27th. But before we call it, let's have the Speaker.
Thank you, Mayor. In accordance with the applicable statutes of the State of Illinois and the ordinance of the City of Prospect Heights, notice is hereby given that the City Council meeting of the Mayor and the City Council of the City of Prospect Heights is being held Wednesday, September 27, 2023, at 6:30 PM, in person in the City Council chambers, Prospect Heights City Hall, 8 North Elmhurst Road, Prospect Heights, Illinois. Mayor Patrick Ludwigson presiding. This meeting will be broadcast live on cable channels Comcast and Astound, RCN Channel 17, and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. It will also be recorded and televised on Comcast and Astound, RCN Channel 17, and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. Attendees who wish to speak on agenda or non-agenda items will be provided an opportunity during the meeting. There is a five-minute time limit for speakers.
Thank you very much. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Okay, thank you. Aldman Cameron?
Here.
Aldman Anderson?
Here.
Aldman Morgan Adams?
Here.
Aldman Dash?
Here.
Aldman Dolick?
Here.
Treasurer Tibbetts?
Here.
And City Clerk Pajajnuk is out with previous notification.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, approval of the minutes. If I could get a omnibus motion to approve the minutes of September 11th, the executive session minutes of September 11th, and the executive session minutes of August 28th, and the joint meeting of the Chicago Executive Board and the City of Prospect Heights and the Village of Wheeling.
So moved. A second?
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Aldman Dolick?
Aye.
Aldman Dash?
Aye.
Aldman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Aldman Anderson?
Aye.
Aldman Cameron?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item four, we have no presentations today. Item five, we have no appointments or confirmations or proclamations. Item six is public comment on agenda matters. I have two. Do we have more?
We got another one, Mayor.
So about seven of them. And before we start this, just to say it is on the agenda, but it's not a, this is extremely prelimi, I would say that using preliminary for us is an overstatement. So there's no decisions being made on this, or really any discussion about it amongst the council, we're just hearing about it today. So just so you know where we are on this whole thing, it's brand-new to us, too. We will start with Laura Gitlin.
Could you pass me down the line a bit, please?
Pass you down? Okay. We'll pass. Peter?
Yeah, I'd rather hear more about the first.
Sarah Meyer?
Should we defer comments till after the applicant presents?
Well, it's an agenda item, so they want to speak to it before.
Okay.
But that typically is done only because we're going to act on something. We are not acting on anything today.
Does it, it says, though, there is an action. If you look at the notes, it says, "Action, roll, vote."
We call for a planning commission.
Right, but we're not, we're not voting. Right, okay. All right. I mean, it's not as if today it's going to pass, and they're going to be shovel, we're going to be taking pictures with shovels tomorrow.
Oh, no.
Just so you know. There's going to be a lot of discussion about this over the next six months, I'm sure. So it's not, nothing imminent, but go ahead. Your name and your address?
Hi, I am Sarah Meyer. Thank you for your time, for serving on the committee. Many of our neighbors are here. We'd like to talk about the proposed townhouses that are going in between lots 506 to 508 on Camp McDonald and the rezoning. I believe that is one of the things. My husband sent an email to our ward Danielle and called as well. And I guess one thing I would like to ask is there was no, there was no public hearing notice put up, maybe because there is no voting on rezoning. I don't know how that works. I didn't have time to research because I just found out about it yesterday. But asking if, when, when is the rezoning voting happening?
So either Pat or our attorney can give you more insight.
And maybe Dan can explain the process as to why they're not seeing the sign yet, and?
Thank you much, very much, Mayor and council members. For everybody's attention, tonight is an introduction of a project. And when a project comes forward, they make a presentation to the council and then seek referral to the Planning, Zoning Board of Appeals, at which time, when we get a formal application, is when the clock starts and we are required to then do all the public hearing notices and invite all the residents to the public meeting to be able to hear the case, ask questions, provide testimony, have your say in the public process. During that time, the PCBA will hear the applicant, will hear all the neighbors, will hear the testimony, they'll ask questions, they'll deliberate, and then make a recommendation back to the city council. The PCBA is a recommending body. And those recommendations can be recommend approval as submitted, recommend approval with conditions, or recommend denial if they don't meet the standards of the application and the standards of the city code. So this is the very first step in introducing a potential project, which the gentlemen have the right to do as contract purchasers. So tonight is taking the sheet off the birdcage to see what's inside for everyone.
Yeah. I mean, that's, I think that's where probably many of the neighbors don't know, like, right, we don't know the process. We found out, and on the action item, it looks as if there is a vote for possible rezoning. So therefore, if something's going to get rezoned and there's no, no one has the voice, that's where trying to come and say, "We would like to have a voice to say something."
So is your husband Andrew?
Yes.
Right, so I did leave him a voice.
Oh, you did.
No, no, I did leave him a message before the meeting apologizing for my
No worries.
...call, his, the return call in close proximity to the meeting time.
And that would, we have it.
Yes, and I can certainly chat with you or your husband in more detail, too.
Yeah.
At some point.
Yeah, I think knowing that, I mean, obviously, we, I sent an email about our, what we have, but knowing that there's time and place to talk about it, because right now rezoning and seeing where that is, what I would say is that it's R1 zone, and it's surrounded by all single-family homes, and Prospect Heights is court for half-acre single-family homes, and we love the look of that. And to the way it is, it's not anywhere else like that in Prospect Heights, when you look at the zoning map of how that would fit into the neighborhood and things like that. Obviously, there'll be more time to share with stuff, but just, and maybe to see where on the website, like, that process is that you talked about, when rezoning would happen, when that would be.
For everyone's information, the guidelines and rules are on the city's website under the city code. It is, when you go onto the main page, you'll see a title that's set, a link that says "City Code," it'll take you to American Legal Publishing. And then it's Title V, Zoning, Chapter 10, Administration, and it'll tell the processes for rezoning and map amendments and those items. So the summary right now is that the, they have an interest in the property and have the right to seek this, now they're asking permission to take the next step.
Yeah, that's what I have to say. So thank, I have time, I afford young children to research and get online and, and find where it is. So thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Is it Jean Salardo? There you go.
I think you pretty much covered it. There's really nothing going on yet. That's where we were wondering about the.
This came on out of nowhere, and we were wondering what is going on. But I can see this is just taking the sheet off. Okay. I think you're getting a feeling how we feel about this, though. We all live around here, so right up front, you know the way we feel. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, so I live at 9 East Leon Lane, and my backyard literally butts up against that entire property. So right now, it's all full of trees, and you can't build back there because there's no access if there was an emergency and so forth. So this type of development would greatly impinge on my property. I've been living there for over 20 years, the trees are over 60 years old. I mean, it's all residential, my kids grew up in Prospect Heights, and it's nice to see younger families now moving in with their young kids. And this type of development and rezoning just doesn't belong in the neighborhood. And I'm just really very much against it and very disappointed that something like this would even be considered, seeing how Prospect Heights is built around single-family homes and families. So this would definitely be a disturbance and not good for the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Frank Moreno. I live at 407 Gregel Court, and my wife and I and our kids before us have lived in the city since 1994. And I appreciate, Mayor, you're telling us the process, and this is preliminary. But as we all know, when a snowball starts rolling downhill, it sometimes is hard to stop. And I guess a few things I just wanted to point out is, in our neighborhood, when people have tried to get variances, put two lot, two homes on an eight-tenths of an acre lot across from me, the, how the prior administration said, "No, you can't do that. This is zoned, R1, half an acre." When the prior owner of this property, Ben Solis, wanted to put a roadway between his home on Gregel Court and the home next to him to put two homes back there, the city said, "No, you can't do that. The road will be non-conforming." We're not against people making money, but you could put two homes in there. A home on Leon Lane East sold for about a million and a quarter a year ago, and that was a redo. You put two big new homes in there, they could probably sell for a million and a half, so these people could still make money. And I think the last thing, and all of us who live in the single-family areas, we, we know there are a lot of homes being redone, and they're being rehabbed. In my neighborhood, in the past 10 years, there are about five or six new homes. There was one just last year, and there's one still going on now. If this variance would be allowed, everybody else then could come in and say, "You gave this variance in this R1 area, I want to put uptown homes." And this will go for all of the wards that have single-family homes. So ultimately, when this snowball starts going downhill, please remember, this is not just this one area with, and I don't even live in, my home doesn't abut this, but it's my neighborhood, and these are my neighbors I've known for years. But it will be affecting, if you allow this, ultimately, it will affect the entire city where you have single-family homes, because every other builder will rightfully come and say, "You allowed it on Camp McDonald. You're discriminating against me if you don't allow it. I want to put up a couple of townhomes." So thanks again. Have a good rest of your evening.
Thank you. You can't pass now. You either go or don't go.
This proposed area is just a few feet from our backyard, and so we're, of course, concerned about this. We really value the area and the big trees and the quietness of the neighborhood. It's a really special neighborhood. One of my, my questions is about water. If, if there were a bunch of townhomes, presumably, they'd have to be on city water, because a small well probably wouldn't cover a bunch of townhomes. So that would mean installing city water for that area. And what about the rest of the neighborhood? We're, we're a neighborhood where everyone has their own well. And I know this is an issue that comes up every, every once in a while, but, but that would be one of my questions. What about water for the, all of these homes?
Thank you. Peter?
Thank you for hearing us. I think my wife and I must think a little bit alike, because I thought about the water problem also. We've only been in the neighborhood six years, and when we first came, or fairly close after, the previous mayor sent us a letter, a survey, asking were we interested in paying tens of thousands of dollars, if I remember right, to get Lake Michigan water. And he must have not gotten the result he wanted, because the matter was dropped. I don't know any of the details about it, but it seems like, as my wife said, the same problem would come up again. And if a group of townhouses were to sink a deeper well, I wonder what would happen to all of our wells, what would happen to the water table. Beyond that, a couple of years ago, there was a rumor in our area, I don't know if it was true or not, that another group bought that property, and they were going to put a Buddhist church in it. And what several neighbors said was, "All properties have to have, have to give access to the fire department, and the property is long and narrow." And none of us could imagine how a road where a fire truck could turn around would even fit in that whole property. It's just too narrow. The third concern I have is if all the trees in that area were torn down, would all of our properties be overrun with raccoons, possums, and skunks? Because there's a lot of wildlife back there. And we like wildlife. We are changing a lot of our grass to trees. The man who, the neighbor who cuts our grass said, "We're going to have a jungle pretty soon." And we like it that way. We like all the trees back there, and it doesn't seem appropriate for our single-home neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Even if you didn't fill out a form, want to comment? Sure. Just state your name and address.
How's it going? My name is Matt Fasthurt. I'm 504, Camp McDonald, so I'm literally right next to where this property is. My wife and I moved in nine years ago, and I've got two small children. When we moved in, we just assumed a single-family home would be our neighbor, so our kids would have other people to play with and families to play with. And there was the Buddhist temple that was proposed to go in a few years ago, and then that kind of fell through, and now this is happening, and it's just not what we imagined when we moved to Prospect Heights. So we're a little disappointed in that. Other things we're worried about is the increased traffic flow. Everything already backs up to right in front of our house, anyway. And now, if you have a townhome complex next to us, that's probably going to add a bunch more traffic, as well as my wife and I are high school teachers in another neighborhood. So we're wondering if there's all this extra people coming, how are the high schools and all the schools in the area are going to deal with all the influx of new children that are going to be in the neighborhood? So just a couple of things to think about. All right? Thanks.
Thank you. Wesley Ozawa? Is that correct? Okay.
Sorry, just got in here, but.
State your address.
Yeah. My name is Wesley Dejura. I live in 509 Gregel Court, Prospect Heights, directly behind the 506 Camp McDonald. We have been, aware that is going to be some kind of construction going on on the, directly behind our backyard, as far as the townhouse building and rezoning and all that kind of stuff. We do have a lot of concerns about it. It is a waste of land, it's, it's a big land. We know about it, we love it. We do appreciate, we welcome construction companies, whoever's going to be building anything out there, whatever's going to be happening, we just want to get it done by the rules. There is a zoning, R1, restricted for the, for the area. There is a purpose for that. R1 is residential, single-family. We don't see any reason for building units, multiple units out there. First of all, I'm a contractor myself, and I understand from the point of view of the, whoever purchased the land, they want to make a lot of money in it, or decent amount of the money, they want to squeeze as many units in it as possible. However, this is going to affect the other neighborhood. Let's do it right. They would have to tap to existing water system, meaning water main, waste, as well as the sewer system. There's a concerns about it. Is the village ready to maintain that much of the water waste out of it? There's also, I know the village doesn't have any requirements as far as cutting down the trees. However, my rough estimate, just my backyard, I would say seriously between 100 and 200 trees that's going to be knocked down. And pavers, versus sun pavers, this is going to have effect to community. Last not least, this is my personal opinion, the stormwater has to be handled somehow. We do have a lot of issues with our stormwater, with the weather that has been changing so quickly and drastically. We have water pumps on, in the middle of the streets once in a while. And now, if we build so much and so many on a little land, how the village is going to handle the other water? If, in the ones, I mean, there is one option to tap into existing system, is the system capable of handling the water. Version number two, doing the French drain, which pretty much means the hole in the ground where the water sits and drains over the time. Well, that's, forget, not forget about it, a lot of homes in the neighborhood, including mine, has the other private wells. This is going to affect the groundwater and the quality of the drinking water as well. So that's my, the only concern. Again, I would love to have somebody to, to build that is buildable on a property. We don't think putting so many units, it, it is, it's just ridiculous, you know, in a, in a R1 zoning. And last not least, the only way we knew about a meeting and have this agenda is because our neighbors. Nobody told us or in it, Mr. Kosov. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Poshan Alduzora from Haimtzeronai Gregel Court. Question, so like my husband mentioned, we didn't get the information regarding this meeting. So my concern is why City Hall didn't handle this properly? We got the information to, actually, day before, from our neighbor, Mr. Kosov. That was the email sent to the all neighbors. So my question is, why City Hall didn't handle this properly for, for the all neighborhood?
Can I ask when, when that was that you heard that?
Yeah. When I heard this, Monday evening.
Okay.
So my question is, why?
I got, I had a, I had a 48-hour jump on you. That's it. So I want you to understand, this isn't like, this is being thrown on a meeting to, like, be, this is just, we're on the mill, this could have been somebody asking to make their garage two foot closer to a lot line, and, and they want to tell us about it. This is really no different than, there's no, trust me, there's no conspiracy here. This is just the initial discussion about it. It's not, this was not a planned initial rollout discussion, it was a, they want to, they want to present something. So, so please don't think there's, this has many miles, many, many miles to go before it even gets started, as far as the process of the hearings and everything else. So it, you're hearing about it now because it, it, it just happened to be on our meeting. They asked to be on our meeting to present it to us. I, I don't even, I'm assuming it's these two guys right here, because I've never met either one of them. So this is not something that I knew about before Thursday, as far as this project, just, just so everybody understands. Hopefully, you believe me. If, I have no reason.
Just to maybe clear, because this was, this is only up for presentation, so there's no obligation, there's no, there's no reason to be sending notice to anybody. We're just trying to, we're just here to listen for the first time. We know nothing about this as well. So this is not something you need to be worried or think there's anything improper. There's nothing improper.
May I say something now?
Sure.
Thank you. Was the red flag on a Saturday, was the survey guy was knocking the doors, he was trying, he needs to get into the backyard because he's doing survey. I asked him why. Okay, because back, back of your fence, it's a big project going on. Okay, no concern, nothing like this. And I heard 24 hours before from the, my neighbor in the email, that something will be going on. And first of all, that's a big project. It's a back of my fence. So that's why we're very concerned. I don't want to have surprised, because this is really, really, really big project. It's a big concern, not only for me, because I am straight behind the fence for all my neighbors. That's why we're here.
And we understand that, but just, just understand, this is just a presentation to the council, that's all it is, that's where it starts, and then at a point where we get the public involved, we, we do give notice, you have plenty of time for the public hearing, all of that's going to be involved, and you're all going to have plenty of notice. So there's.
If it even gets that far.
Yeah, but even, if it gets that far.
It's not just an initial presentation.
Right.
That's all it is. They're, it's an applicant, they're allowed to certainly apply to the city.
And this happens all the time. It happens in every city.
Everything starts from the beginning.
Right, and it happens in every city and every village, that, you know, this, this is a very common thing.
So we, as neighbors, I believe all the neighbors, would like to know every detail going on in the property behind us.
Okay, well, then you're going to listen, as we will today, to this presentation.
Yes, definitely. Thank you.
Right, if it goes, if it goes to the ZBA, PCBA meetings, you can schedule your, what days it goes on? Dan, Thursdays?
Thursdays.
The fourth Thursday of every month, except for December, because that's the holiday week, is the regular scheduled meeting of the Planning, Zoning Board of Appeals. And for all of you to understand, prior, 15, a minimum of 15 days prior to those hearing dates, the legal notice will be sent to neighbors within 350 to 450 feet from the property lines. So all of you will get a registered or written notice of a public hearing coming up, informing you of the date and time, and it's in this room at 7:00 PM on the fourth Thursday of the month, whatever the date that it's to be. You'll have, and then we will have full-blown application and full-blown plans for public review at that point in time. So if there's any questions, you can call my office in the Building Department and come in and take a look at that prior to. I think it, you know, at this time, it's just an introduction of the plan, and you're going to hear what they're proposing for, on the property. And then, when the appropriate time comes, if it gets to that point, as Aldman Dash said, proper notice will be sent.
There's not even an application for this right now. I mean, right, I mean, is there, there's not even a formal request for a, a meeting in front of the PCBA?
We've had, we've had a meeting to talk about what the zoning requirements are and what the, the steps in the process are. And the applicant would like to get moving because they try and make a spring, if it goes forward, a spring possible construction. That's, then that's what every developer and builder would be looking for targeting, as quickly, you know, they, they want to get this approved. So we're just honoring their right to make a presentation and make a request of the council.
Dan, could you also explain, because people oftentimes, if they're beyond that boundary limit, "Well, why wasn't I notified?" And the backup for that is the sign that is placed at the property? Could you go into that, too?
So the, the State of Illinois has what's called the Zoning Enabling Act, which allows the cities to control their zoning. The state law only requires notice to 250 feet from the property line. Because of our large lots in the City of Prospect Heights, the city fathers stated that notice should go. that notice should go further out, 350 to 450 if there's a roadway, so that people, you know, you don't count the width of the roadway. Also too, it requires that certified mail be sent. So you will get a formal notice. It will be in the paper of local publication, which is the Journal and Topics. Additionally, we have to post the property at the right of way, announcing the date and time of the public hearing. So we try and give multiple ways of getting the information out. It's also too, the city has an e-news mechanism that announces and you can sign up to get notices of all public meetings, not just zoning board, but all of the council meetings, the Police and Fire Commission, the Natural Resources. And that's a, that's a great way to find out when certain meetings are coming up. And that can be signed on through the city's website. So we, we do have multiple ways of noticing it. It's just we're not with this particular project at that point yet.
Anybody else? You were.
My name is Kaylan Kusev.
Got to say it in the microphone.
I'm sorry.
It's all right.
So my name is Kaylan Kusev. I'm the owner of 12 West Elaine. And probably I shouldn't be speaking here tonight, but because I'm the youngest neighbor over here, I just purchased the property less than a year. And sitting over there, I was listening to my neighbors and I thought I should say probably something. I, the only reason why I decided to purchase property over here on 12 West Elaine, it was because of the, the way that this neighborhood is built as a single properties, have an acre lot, and all of the privacy that you have. I own another two properties in Glenview, which I'm living right now in one of them. And I was really happy and I thought I'm blessed to get the property in this neighborhood. And I just got to this notice that transforming, it's really in the back of my yard, the 506 and 508. And I thought this is the major, you know, issues that can possibly happen, you know, to build such a large building on such a small land. Thank you so much.
Thank you. In the spirit of complete transparency, I'm going to ask again, anybody else want to comment? I don't want anybody to leave here thinking that they didn't say what they wanted to say about this. And I read later on that, oh, they, they had this quiet meeting and nobody could say anything. So anybody else? All right, you're welcome to stay. We don't have a lot going on business-wise until they actually speak, so it's not going to be very long, it should be very quick. So we move on to the consent agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Item A, a staff memo and resolution approving bid and contract award for the 2023 Street Patching Program with Chicagoland Paving Contractors at a cost of $58,900. Item B, a staff memo and resolution authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with Cook County Department of Transportation and the Highways Invest in Cook Grant for Phase One Preliminary Engineering for Elmhurst Road Sidewalk Connectivity Project. Item C, a staff memo and resolution authorizing a civil engineering services agreement with Walt Hamilton Associates for Phase One Preliminary Engineering Services for the Elmhurst Road Sidewalk Connectivity Project. I look for a motion to approve items A, B, and C.
So moved, Morgan Adams.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item eight is the second reading of O2324 Staff Memo and Ordinance granting a variation to reduce required side yard, or I'm sorry, required rear yard setback for a garage addition to the single-family residents at 910 Sherwood Drive. This is the second reading. Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Now, item nine, presentation by ML Development of Development Plan for 506, 508 Camp McDonald Road Rezoning Property from R1 to R2 in Request for Referral to the Planned Commission Zoning Board. So at this time, is it, is it acceptable to have discussion before any motion that could be made? Okay. Okay, so we're going to let you guys have your presentation first. So if you want to step up and state your name and.
Wonderful. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Alderman, Clerk, and Staff Persons, my name is John Shease. I am an architect with JCSA. Our hometown is Oak Park, Illinois. We are currently active in community, about 30 different communities like yourselves. And thank you for allowing us to come into your community and give this presentation. As has been said, this is your first look at this. And hopefully we can move through the presentation. It'll give you a sense of the development, but it'll also give you a sense of the process that we're looking to engage in. First, I'd like to introduce the development team. The development team is headed up by Michael Leidervuder, he's here tonight. ML Development is the name of his corporation. He and I have worked together for about 10 years in different communities, and we have some of the work we've done together to present to you tonight. We also have addresses in other communities that can tell you a bit about what we've done and what we look to do. The architecture and approvals, that's me and my corporation out of Oak Park. We have tapped the engineering and environmental firm of Spaceco Engineering. The site, we'll talk about a little later, has, has some engineering challenges, and so we brought in that team. We also have Bill Grie from Fish Transportation. He's a former Walt Hamilton longtime employee, so he's familiar with the town. But he, we're bringing him in as a transportation consultant, traffic. I introduced the developer, the place of business where his corporation is based out of. And then we just brought in some small developments, something that, a short portfolio of the work that we've done together. This is Bishop Townhomes in the city of Chicago. And this was, we brought this in because it has some similar characteristics. It's a long, narrow infill site, a little bit different context. There were very few trees, but similar situation, Townhomes around a very long site. You could see that in the photographs. You could see some of the design is fit for the neighborhood, the urban neighborhood. This is a different neighborhood in Chicago. It's a development that we did on Pearson. There was a six-unit building and then a four-unit building. A different view of that as well. The marketing consultant that we're currently using was the marketing consultant for both those properties as well. This is a site that's very difficult to photograph. This is in Oak Park, but it shows infill. This is a very, well, patting myself on the back, it's a clever design because it's bounded by four alleys. And, but what you, what we want to highlight here is that we're almost always working within a context. You know, there's, we're, we're almost never working with large open fields, so we're always engaged with neighbors. We're working in existing infrastructure, roads, water systems, sewer systems, storm management. Those are things that are a part of every development that we do. And you'll see as we highlight a little, a few more points about this specific development. Here's a view of that site on the ground there. And it's called the Oak Park Oasis because there's not a lot of green space. Oak Park is a four-square-mile town, and sites like this are very hard to find. This is right on the edge of Schiller, I'm sorry, not Schiller, it's on Schiller, but on the edge of Wicker Park, yeah, a very, very interesting neighborhood. So we have to work around a lot of existing contexts. This also had, was layered with the fact that it is a historic district, so we had to come in and work with the, with the neighbors around the historic nature of the park and adjacent structures. So you can see it's actually a two-building where we transitioned from a traditional look to a more contemporary look. This is the process that we expect to engage in. You know, we've had a couple of discussions with Dan, with village staff, and we continue to do that. We consult with our design, build, and marketing team. We, we, we don't do this together, so we have a larger team that we keep going back and forth on. We start with the marketing team that tells us, yes, there is a need for this development, there's a requirement, not, not requirement, a need, a need within the community. And then they tell us, well, that need is for this type of home, this type of square footage, number of bedrooms, and things like that, guest parking. So we put that together and feed that to the design team and come up with a preliminary design, which is what you'll see today. You're, you're looking at a, something between a concept and a preliminary design. We're here to listen. We're here to listen to you. And then the next one is the, the interesting one. We, because we do this so often, we know that neighbor, we like to engage with neighbors. We go out on our own. We, as Dan said, there's a list coming to us, a very large list of neighbors. We will send out our own notices and copy staff. We host neighborhood meetings, and we don't keep it as neighborhoods. There's often stakeholders that aren't neighbors, you know, there's, might be a, a, a public agency like library board, schools that we will be part of, the development will be part of. So we host those. We take, we take that input, and oftentimes that affects the final design. I'd like to pause on that because I think some of the, you've heard some of the neighbors are surprised that they, we actually welcome the engagement. So I'm hoping that we can get started on that. This is the very, very early stages, as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, and we agree, we're, we're at the, we're not even off the bat yet, to use a Cubs analogy. Then we will engage in the planning and zoning that has its own regular schedule and own reg, and own notices, the, the sign, the, the mailings that go out, registered mailings. But to get started on the development, so I introduced ourselves, just a little bit about the process. So the site is 3.45 acres. It's currently zoned R1. Our request is to rezonate to an R2 multifamily. We are proposing 48 single-family attached homes, or as some folks call them, row homes, in multiple buildings, you'll see that. The parking, because it is a tucked-away site and we don't want to impact neighbors and roads, we've designed it with a total of 204 parking spaces. Included in that are 12 parking guest spaces for short-term deliveries, you know, there's always the FedEx and all the other things. That brings it to a 1.1 to 4.25 ratio. And that includes two cars within the driveway, in the garage, two in the driveway, and 12 spaces that are common. This is small. I understand that you might be struggling to see this right now, but what we're planning is for a total of six buildings along a common drive. And there's a hammerhead turnaround for emergency vehicles at the end. Again, none of this has been vetted by your staff or your consultants, so that, a lot of that may be affected by those incoming comments. But you can see, let me see if I can point this, there are three buildings on this side, three buildings on that side, and so those clusters would be constructed in a phased-in manner. Some of the details are here, you know, sort of the lot area coverage and things like that. We understand that this is by all intents and purposes an open, clear site. We understand that we're agents of change, we're coming in as an agent of change, and we're hoping to, along with engaging with neighbors, is to manage that change. And I'll, I'll get some of the, if you will allow me, at the tail end of this, talk about some of the neighbors' comments that I heard and how, how we can affect that. This is the look of one of the clusters. This is the elevation that neighbors would see. And you could see that we are trying to vary the, and modulate the, both the height and the front and setback on the building. This is the side elevation, and you could see that, you know, here is one building, here's the roadway, here's some green area between it, and the neighbors' fences would be here. We're planning on having this, having the site fenced so that neighbors, when they look in, they'd see a wooden fence between their property and this property here. The plans, they're preliminary, but this is the general concept. On the ground floor, there'd be a living area on the front at the entry, a two-car garage that's wide enough to handle the service things like waste and recycling, some, some general storage, things like that. On the second floor, you'd have living spaces, you know, open spaces. These are planned with trusses, so it's a, it's an open floor plan and three bedrooms and two baths on the top floor. The request, right now, the request that we're looking at is to rezone from an R1 to an R2 and to reduce the front yard setback from 165 to 139. It's a nominal request for the front, but we're looking to maintain a, a large green area in the front for possible, you know, green space, just to let the, the stormwater percolate down. And so for the two requests, one would be map amendment and the, the, so map amendment from an R1 to R2, and then the front yard relief, which would be a variance request. I think it might be, Mr. Mayor, I'll take your lead on this. You know, I have put this on there. We've gone through the standards for both the map amendment and the variance. Might be a little too soon to talk about that. I'll take your lead. I do have some general comments on it. We did submit some notes in your packet about our responses, but, you know, that might be getting a little too ahead of ourselves. I'll take your lead or anybody else's lead if you want me to cover that.
Yeah, I mean, any, any of the details you could take would have to go to the PZBA.
Right.
I think what you're here to do today is to present your, your, your presentation to what we see as far as the drawings and what your thoughts are to that, and not necessarily get into the.
Yeah.
The details. The only thing I would ask, I'm just going to ask the one question, or, or so you can clarify for everybody else, you're using the word "front yard," and I think it's important for you to maybe describe why you call that the "front yard." I look, don't look at it as the "front yard," a little simpler, you know, maybe. So explain to everybody why, you know, because of how, how. So explain to everybody why, you know, because of how, how this is being built, what is a front and what is a side yard?
That's a good question. I take that for granted because
Right.
We do this all the time, but that's a good question. So by zoning definition, the front yard is the area right here off of East Camp McDonald Road. And the way the, the zoning ordinance looks at it, it says, from the road, the primary access, the distance between that road and the first structure is called the front yard setback. The zoning requirement says, just general, in the zone district, we want, the code requires 20% of the lot depth. The lot depth here is, call it 830 linear feet, 20% of that is 169. Our first building starts 139 feet, so we're looking for relief for the difference in those two numbers. So that's, I think that's about, I hope I explained it carefully.
Yeah, you did. It's just when you showed that picture of the, what everybody, and I myself included, looks like the front yard.
Yes.
You see the door and the big
Yes.
Front door and the big elevation in the front is really a side.
That is, that is correct.
And that's why, that's why you are so close to the lot lines on both sides with what I would call the "front yard," but really by zoning is called the "side yard."
That's correct. That, that's, that's a good distinction, and that's one of the things that we work out during the neighborhood meetings. I realize that very few neighbors are familiar with reading, both zoning, but also architectural drawings, as you point out, so we work through that. We would have more drawings than this. Elevation drawings are hard to, you know, for non-architects, it's hard to look at, they look very big. We, we bring in artists' renderings. So that, that brings things down to human scale and gives a little bit better understanding of what the, the structure would look like.
Okay. Any, I guess we can go from, with questions, let's just say, from the council from right to left. Alderman Dash, if you had anything you wanted to ask or comment on or
Does that conclude your presentation, John?
I, for now, I wanted to, I think it might be helpful if, because I took down notes from the neighbors, and they brought up some good points. I won't answer them necessarily, but I will say, these are things that we are prepared to bring either consultants or something to fill in the gap of information. So if I could get a chance of that at the tail end, that'd be wonderful.
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
So I would say that I consider myself to be one of the most pro-development people on this council. There's not a whole lot that I, I object to normally, and I don't love to see vacant retail spaces in our municipality. Certainly, we don't have a ton of vacant land. So again, I consider myself to be very pro-development. I'm definitely okay with change. I would say I don't think you did yourself any favors this evening by sharing the pictures of the very urban infill projects that you are normally working with. All of the examples are in municipalities where the surrounding land uses are more compatible with the product you're showing. So again, I didn't see any examples of where you had a suburban infill piece, where you had, you know, R1 zoning next to a, an R2 zoning, for example. So again, I don't consider this lot here to be like a typical infill site, like we're not knocking down a shopping mall to repurpose it for something different, which again, I'm very much in favor of those kinds of redevelopments, but I think this lot is unique, where it was always intended to be residential, and so I don't really look at it as an infill I would say some of the opposition too, so we like the trees, I don't, you know, to me, that's not, doesn't hold a lot of priority. Again, to develop a piece like this with residential use, it'd be likely that some of the trees would have to go. As far as being concerned about students in schools, our schools are set up to serve students, that's what they're in the business of doing, so I'm not concerned about schools. I know that during the process, you would have to vet the traffic. Bill Greve is a very well-known, well-recognized professional in his industry, so relying on his report to vet out if traffic truly would be an issue, again, I know you'd have to prove that. During the process, you'd also have to prove that the existing stormwater infrastructure could support something like this. So again, I know that process would vet that, stormwater, I'm good with the parking. So again, I understand how these pieces get developed, but in this circumstance, I do not believe that an R2 zoning is compatible with the existing land use around it. You're surrounded on three sides by R1, so I don't believe it's compatible. The geometry of the site, in my opinion, doesn't allow you to align the buildings in a manner that would be conducive to meshing with the neighbors. Normally, you would see these buildings, again, in an infill piece, if you had residential on sides, the buildings would be aligned so that the end of the unit would face a single-family home versus the front elevation facing people's backs, you know, their bedroom windows. So normally, have, again, having a side profile to an existing building is usually more palatable because you decrease the, you know, the visibility between the two different products. So again, I think the geometry of the site doesn't bode well to aligning townhome buildings to make them mesh well within this, this piece. And again, the geometry of the parcel unfortunately does not give you a lot of room to provide a buffer. So again, having two different land uses next to each other isn't unheard of, but normally, you would be able to provide a pretty substantial buffer, where you could provide a berm or some landscaping to, again, create a buffer between the existing residents and this different, you know, product and land use. So again, the geometry of the site, I don't think allows you to incorporate some of the characteristics that would normally allow a municipality to get on board with, you know, transitional land uses. Density, I think, is another topic for me. Again, I'm not afraid of density. I would say that this plan is aggressive. Normally, this kind of row home is probably about 10 to the acre, especially in a suburban setting. You could certainly get more density in a more true, like, infill site. So again, it's not the density that, I just don't think the density on this site is appropriate. On a different site, I think you could certainly get more density with this kind of product because that's how, how it lives. So for those reasons, I believe that this proposal is not something that I would support. And I do know that for you to prepare an application and prepare all of the supplemental documents that would be required and to go through the process would involve a financial, a pretty substantial financial commitment from, from the developer. Clearly, you would be looking to the plan commission for recommendation and then to us ultimately for a vote. I would be a no vote, so I would recommend this evening that we don't send you to plan commission so that, to me, it doesn't make sense. But again, I'm just one city council member.
Thank you.
Listen, if, no, seriously, the audience, again, we don't need applause. Again, I'm an elected official, I'm here to, to serve my ward and the community to the best of my capacity, okay? So again, we're all entitled to business, you know, to opinions, whether you agree with us or not, but I do thank you all for coming this evening, though, because you're, you're at least part of the process to help us understand what our constituents want, so. But thank you for coming forward this evening, and thank you for your interest in our municipality. I do appreciate it. And again, maybe to be determined on what transpires here with this application, but maybe there's other opportunities in our municipality for maybe you to work with Dan to identify other sites that could certainly use some development, so. But thank you for coming this evening.
Alderman Dolek?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I share some of the same concerns, so I'm not going to just repeat all of the same things that you just heard. I do have concerns about the compatibility with the site, and I don't want to get too far into details this early on in this project, but I would have concerns about lighting, visibility, when it's right up against R1 properties. As Alderman Dash mentioned, it's difficult to have some kind of a berm or separation if you're right up against neighboring houses. I also have concerns about the traffic pattern. And again, I don't want to get too deep into details here, but just having one entrance point off of Camp McDonald Road, with the number of units, traffic in and out, there's no traffic like there currently, so if you're making a right turn to head west on Camp McDonald, that's an easy turn. If you're waiting to make a left-hand turn, Camp McDonald Road can be busy at times during the week. That traffic flow, I think, should be, or that traffic pattern should be looked into a little bit more deeply, and as well as, as was mentioned, water, storm flow management, all of those things. I would want more information from an engineering standpoint to see if, if that is compatible. But it's, it's a very nice-looking project, but again, I don't know if it's compatible with this location, but I would be interested in, in hearing more. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Blake? Alderman Morgan Adams?
So I would also share the same views as Alderman Dash and Alderman Dolek. I have some serious concerns about the compatibility issue with the surrounding area. I have great concerns about the traffic issue. Of course, there'd have to be a traffic study. I, I am concerned about the cutting down of all these trees. I don't know if you're considering if there's an issue, if you're, what you're, what you're even talking about concerning, if anything. I'm an issue regarding water, where you're gonna get water, because you haven't talked about that, no, you haven't answered these questions, and you haven't had a chance to, I understand that. And we have stormwater issues as well. And I think the geometrics are problematic, that we do have other locations in Prospect Heights that might serve this project. I just, I don't know that this is, this is, this is a good location. I would agree with that. I think it's a very, that big concern I have on that. So for the same reasons cited by Alderman Dash and Alderman Dolek, I, I would, I would be very concerned about the compatibility issue in, in general.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Anderson?
I'd say, you know, once, you know, someone purchases a piece of property and they have hopes to develop it in some fashion, you'd, you'd want to consider what the zoning is and what, what other options to, that one would have to stay within an R1. And I do agree with some of the comments that were made tonight. We do need, you know, builders to come in and build beautiful, beautiful townhouses in our area. There's a need for it, and I can see from your previous work, it's pretty, looks like it's really nice quality. I don't see that it works in this situation, but I'd go back to the drawing board and see what you can do with this property, because the value of property in Prospect Heights has been, has gone up tremendously because of the half-acre opportunities, and this was not so much the case 10 years ago, but it's become a pretty popular place to live and because of the low inventory. So I think that there's other options there that would, you know, you could build a few million-dollar homes there. So thank you.
Thank you.
Oliver Cameron?
I would ditto that as well. You know, it just brings back memories of Lexington, you know, some years ago, but yeah, I, I just don't think this, this type of development in that area would be suitable for that area. Traffic would be one, Camp McDonald's is, is super busy. I just think that we could possibly do this in a different area, but just not this area.
Okay.
Thank you.
Those are the people that get the vote. I don't get the vote, but I'm still gonna give you my two cents, and you can give me change if you want back. But I think that this is a great location for you. You're taking advantage, not in a negative way, like you're taking advantage of a situation, but you're taking advantage of the large, single-family lots there, the open space, and you're trying to bring people in, as many people as you can get into there, not, not in a bad way. Again, I just don't know what term to use to say it, but you, you're bringing people into an area that is, is loved by people because of what it is, with the half-acre, you know, single-family lots, but you're not bringing any of that component to what you're building there. You know, you're utilizing what's around it and saying, this is what people want, but you're not bringing it to the product that you're delivering. Now, I just did some quick math, I'm a numbers guy. You've got six buildings there, the footprint of each building is about 6,500 square feet. I don't know if there's any 5,000-square-foot ranches in Prospect Heights, but I bet you there's probably one or two, right? So the idea that you would have a 5,000-square-foot ranch is not unheard of, which would allow, you know, six buildings to go there. So when people look at this and say, you can't build this here, you're gonna tear down the trees, you're gonna do all this stuff, you could build six 5,000-square-foot ranches on the site with a few variances, you know, and, and, and get it done. So all those other things that people have talked about, lot coverage or trees, even if these were single-family homes, six big ones, which we see in Prospect Heights, all that stuff would still be impacted. They'd have to tear the trees down, there'd be drainage issues, there'd be, you know, all the same problems you have with what you have here with the footprint. So my, my problem with it is, is that you're, you're selling the sizzle of the community around it, but you're not bringing that into what you're bringing here, and it's just too dense. If you were telling me you were gonna build six 5,000-square-foot ranches and sell them for $1.75 million, I'd be happy. People would be happy too, even if it went against some of the things that they're talking about, with the trees being cut down and whatnot. That's still gonna happen if they do that, but it's the density to me that, that is what I can't live with. So I know you have before us a, you're asking us to make a motion to move this to the PZBA. I'm gonna ask if you want to reconsider that before I ask for that vote, and then maybe
You can ask my client, if you don't mind.
You don't have to do it right now? Well, okay, if you want to do it now, yeah.
My client agrees that it's probably best not to refer it. We can go back to the drawing board and talk to Dan and his staff. I think that's best.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
No, we'd love to hear from you again.
Yeah.
Because, you know, we love our community. If you build something nice
I can hear that.
People will come, as they say.
I can hear that.
Okay. So with that, we're, we'll move on to item 10. Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Thank you.
You can stay if you want, there's not much more left, but you don't have to if you don't want to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 10, elected official staff and commission reports. We will not have the finance report meeting, or the finance report presented tonight, but I will look to my left, any elected officials that want to make a report?
No.
I see none?
No.
To my right? To my right with staff, anybody want to make a report? To my left? So with that, we'll move on to the approval of the expenditures.
Thank you. We have a total of $238,2723, a 9/8/2023 payroll of $170,365.63, the August Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund payment of $16,093.29, for a total warrant of $424,666.15.
I need a motion to approve?
Come on.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Dolek?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Motion passes. We have We have no executive session, so I would look for a mo... Oh, public comment. On non-agenda, did anybody turn anything in? Non-agenda?
No.
Okay. No executive session. I look for a motion to adjourn.
So move?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.